You are watching Access LaPorte County, Channel 97. Coming up next is the June 20th, 2023 meeting of the Michigan City Common Council Sewer Laterals and Refuge Pickup Workshop. You can find more information for this workshop by visiting www dot access laporte county dot org.
Um, it's uh about four thirty-three and we're gonna open up the workshop and uh I'm looking to see if there's anybody on the uh Zoom. I don't see anybody. Hopefully they will come in. I talked to uh Councilwoman Angie Deitch Nelson Deitch. She said that she was gonna zoom in. So I guess what we need to discuss here is any uh of the funding process. I guess that's the uh big, uh, one of the big issues here with this uh project. So Councilman Don Prisbalinski, what would you, uh, do you have any remarks on the memo that was received from the hit uh Harris Law Firm on, on the uh claims and the uh other information?
Well, I just received that uh memo this afternoon when I came down to the clerk's office. So I quickly glanced at it. I didn't have time to study the whole back of it. But I guess just in a general statement, I can say that, as I stated at the last council meeting, uh, I have no problem with the ordinance. I think the ordinance is good. I think it helps out the community as a whole. Uh, because to do some of this work is awfully, awfully expensive that uh, I don't think we need to uh, fund, uh, fund this project at a quarter of a million dollars every year to keep it that high. And uh I appreciate the fact of talking to uh both Mike Vladovich and Steve Stanford Sanford from uh the Sanitary District about the amounts of actual laterals that have been changed, what the cost is gonna be. And with that information and the information in front of us, uh, I haven't changed my opinion as far as what I think the appropriate amount should be to fund this project on a annual basis. I still think that $250,000 a year is way too much. We can cut that down and with the monies that we reduce the 250,000 from, we can do other projects in the city.
Okay, um, we have a couple guests tonight, um, from the sanitary district. Um, one is the uh uh, the financial officer and the superintendent and is, is Steve your assistant, Michael?
He was the operational manager.
Operational manager. So I do have a, a, a question that the uh on this memo that I received also. Now, I thought that when we were talking about there was an average of five or six repairs a year. So in this uh memo was, this was put up by, uh, I believe Attorney Meyer. So he said that there were two repairs in 2021 and five in 2022. So that's seven right there. And I don't see any, any documentation for um our figures for after 2020. So did, did we, did we have any repairs uh last year, Steve?
I searched my records and Mr. Cuss's records and
Good evening, Councilman. I'm Steve Stanford, Operations Manager for the Sanitary District. This list is based on a thorough search of the records I keep and the records that Michael Cuss kept on these type of projects. And there were several in 2017, 2018. But that didn't fit the order in, so I only dialed it back to actually, I looked back to August 1st, 2019. And the earliest eligible project was in January of 2020.
You speak up just a little louder, Steve.
Yes, uh, like I said, this was based on a thorough search of the records that we have at Sanitary District, and I didn't find anything between August 29th and January 2020.
Okay. But you said, how many did you, do you know how many you had in 2017 and 2018?
I did not count them.
There were several.
I would estimate that it was five perhaps over that period of time.
Okay, so you're, we're at the, we're at the point that there's a least three projects a year, right?
On average, that would appear to be the case.
Right? Okay, so all right, three projects. I think that do you guys have anything else? Uh or uh, I was looking at the sheet. I don't know if you guys, did you guys see this uh uh, sheet on uh that was sent by Attorney Meyer's office? Can I share that with you?
Yeah, like Scott and I.
You, you, you looked at it?
We prepared that.
Okay, so the uh 2022 there's um are, are we claiming that these properties aren't eligible? Cause there was a I, I don't even understand this one. It's on uh, in Gary, Indiana.
That's the property owner's location.
Oh, okay. That's the property's owner's location. All right. So the uh, you have one in twen- another one in 2022. So is that one listed or?
There are five listed for 2022, Councilman.
Okay, so are we, so we're counting all these other, other ones? So there's no no problem with that. One, two, three, four, five. I see uh, I see a total of eight. And I do not see um I do not see on this list that was provided. Um oh yeah, I do. I see that one on Pearl Street. Okay, well then we have actually.
Or two on Pearl Street, Councilman.
There's eight on this sheet, not seven. Do you have any uh, uh figures? How come, you know, when I, when I was wondering like how come all these these one, these uh, how come the repairs on Pearl Street are in like a shared cost of $11,000 and, and the other one is $6,800? And uh, then we have one on Hobart Street that's 11,000. And does that have, what, does that have to do with the, the depth of the sewers? So there's a
Expensive repairs typically involve a full depth cut and usually a, a 10 foot deep excavation in the, in the street that has to be repaired.
Okay.
The last one on this list here you'll see was barely modest at $5,791. All we had to do in that particular case was dig a hole in the sand or repair the pipe and backfill it.
Okay, all right. All right, thank you. That's, that's that's a pretty good explanation, I would say. All right, do you have any further, anything further to add? Michael?
Can I ask a question?
Sure, I'm sorry. Uh, go ahead, Angie.
So do, as far as how, how do the repairs come about? Does the, do you guys schedule them or do the does the customer or the resident come to you saying they want to get it done? How, what's the step, the process to get there? So that we can, how can we plan for, you know, however many we're gonna do per year? Is it just hit or miss? People sign up? How, how does that happen?
Uh, these sewer projects, each one of them is unique. The circumstances can be unique. A frequent way that these begin is when a customer calls the sanitary district and says, my sewer is plugged up. And then we investigate. We take a look at whether the public sewer is flowing properly, in which case we normally tell the customer that that's a private issue between, in, in your private sewer from your home to the sewer main. And in those kind of cases, we advise the customer that we do have this program to subsidize parts of the work to help them.
Okay. I was just wondering, cause we're only averaging, averaging a couple a year. But I'm wondering, will we have more? If we, once we start offering, you know, support for the other half, will it be more or less? Or will it be about the same?
Be reasonable to surmise that an increased subsidy would lead to an increase in demand.
Agreed. Thank you. But.
Thank you, Angie. Um the, the point, I guess, with that is usually the uh citizen or the person who's, or the property owner that's having problems with their flow usually calls the sanitary district and then the whole ordeal starts. You guys go out and camera it and see what's going on there. See if it's your responsibility on the, uh, main. And then try to surmise if it's where it's actually the break is at.
Mm-hmm.
Because I think everybody realizes that if there is a problem on the citizen's property, it's their response, totally their responsibility. So, um, I think that was, the point is, is that as our infrastructure gets older and we don't do any sewer projects that need to be done that have been identified, that the cost could average two or three a year could be for any, any amount. Once uh sewers start um to degrade and also depending on where the trees have been planted, cause I think that's something that we have omitted, that, that needs to be looked at and identifying at a later date in time, identifying where the laterals are at and where the trees are at in, in some of these right of ways, because trees have a direct influence on breaking into the tiles and opening them up. So, you know, I didn't wanna get too many things in this ordinance at this time. I just wanted to try to address what's going on right, right now with, you know, getting people's services back in line and lot of the, lot of the costs. And I'm hoping that by through this program that you guys will be able to maintain it. And I know that right now, the way it's structured is that you have the homeowner go out and get bids. Am I correct?
It can go either way. Over half of the projects we manage completely, we solicit the bids from the qualified contractors.
Okay.
And then we inform the customer how much the bid is for and write an estimate for how much we believe their share will be. And we do a written agreement with the customer.
Okay, and you have a li- you have a list of, of people that you like, uh, that you feel are dependable providers, correct?
And there's about a dozen contractors that we typically solicit. Um, if you look at one of these, the, the more recent job on Pearl Street.
Yes.
Nine contractors were solicited and we got one quote.
Is that a fact?
Yes.
Okay. All right, that's, so is, is the uh, with that being said, was it the fact that people didn't want the work or they looked at it and it was too uh did anybody give you a reason why they didn't want a bid?
Not specifically.
Okay, all right, all right. Do you have any, any more questions? Uh, Councilman Don Prisbalinski? On that?
No, I think uh the report is pretty self-explanatory and yeah, I don't have any other questions.
All right. So I think that, I appreciate all the information that you guys got together and I, I appreciate the work of uh Attorney Myers. And I've, and uh, I, I know that this I think it's a program that we need to get uh started and uh moving down the road and maybe look at evaluating what sewer projects really need to be identified to get done.
I have a question.
Yes, Angie, go ahead. I'm sorry, I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't see.
So the bid, was that for individual project or did you collectively book a couple of them together?
That was a single project. Um, these projects are typically urgent and in some cases emergencies if the customer has no flow at all.
Okay.
So we have to take these as they come. And as I said, uh, earlier, each one of these projects has some unique aspects to it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Deitch. Thank you. All right, so I guess with, with that, we'll move forward and talk about um the uh problem with collecting waste. Does anybody have any other? Okay, do we have any other comments on uh the sewer lateral projects?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Yvonne Hoff, Master City Controller. So I, I, I'm just curious. This is only for repairs on public property, correct?
Correct.
Um, did we ever think to ask the sanitary district to revise their resolution? Or I don't think they're in such dire straits that they need the city to help them fund their repairs.
Well, the only way I'm gonna address that is uh I don't really know where their financial, uh, is at. Maybe you do.
I have a, a direct response.
Let me, let me finish, Steve. But I will say this. We've been working on this for how many weeks now? And this thing needs to get rolling. And this is a, I don't appreciate you coming up and giving us that kind of uh, question at this point in time.
Yeah, well, I've asked this question of the district. And nobody approached them to, I, I'm, I'm just curious. I don't see a problem with reimbursing the people, you know, from August of 2019 forward. But going forward, can't we just ask the district to revise their resolution that they pay for the repairs on public property and the accidents?
Excuse me.
Pay on, on.
Here's what, what I say to that is that
I'm done.
I don't control the sanitary district. The mayor is in charge of the sanitary district. And if that was a thought that you had, that maybe you should have went to the mayor to discuss it with the sanitary district, Ms. Hoff, okay, well that's how I can only address that. I can't, I personally can't tell them or the city council really can tell them what to do. They're their own entity and the mayor controls them.
And Councilman, I can't speak for Attorney Meyer.
Yeah.
But I believe what he would say about this is that by state statute, we cannot do work on private property.
Oh, I don't think Yvonne was talking about private property. Okay, but I'm, look, I, that's, I'm not trying to, I think that your question is good, but I think my answer was also good because I think that by this time, the mayor should have addressed it. And we're trying to work through this thing the best we can. I appreciate your comment. Thank you. All right, now we're gonna move on. Angie, do you have anything else? Brian, do you have anything else? Is that Dalia up there?
Yes, that's Dalia.
I have nothing to call.
Okay, thank you. Dalia, do you have anything?
No, nothing. I, I actually joined later. I was having some computer issues, so sorry about that.
Okay, well, you look like you're
I do, I do have something. So, okay, so I, I heard the question um that came up, but my and I kind of agree. We let the sanitary district off the hook on a lot of different things, but I think to start to do something now is the right thing to do. I think with some of the amendments that um that are in here, um we can, you know, I think the amount, I know Don and I have spoken about the amount, maybe, you know, changing the amount. But I think we could put something in here, maybe, that addresses um, request to take the necessary steps where we have to, you know, to transfer and to, I would say, transfer and maybe do an and/or statement. Referencing the sanitary district to take some type of action, maybe too. That way we have two pools of money. But I agree, maybe we can go back to that and, and talk through that with the sanitary district at some time in the future. But in the meantime, um, I was hoping that we could lower the amount um, for the request. I know we said we got $60,000. I'm sorry, I got my camera. We got $60,000 in the memo that would be retroactive. And then um, we put 250,000, but I, we didn't, as far as annually, I'll be more committed to, um, as suggested, 100,000 and then revisit it annually or something like that.
Yeah, that's uh, we're gonna try to get that incorporated here this evening and uh definitely about that yearly review. I, I thought that was a good thing that we discussed earlier. And now that we have the actual figures, I'm, I'm looking, I'm, I'm having a tendency to look. But y'all, we also have to remember that if one of these streets are, uh, start having problems, it, it's, it's like a snowball effect. So I think that we could uh do something with the money amount because when I originally wrote this legislation, I really didn't know the magnitude of how many people were affect, would be affected. So I, I think that we can, we can move on the uh total amount in the, in the fund.
Now, the public, I, I do have a question. Maybe the Senate, he, he mentioned that maybe it's some, something to do with work. But this is only, these are only issues that are on the public on our property, right?
Correct.
So I don't think that would be an issue from the sanitary district standpoint of being able to support paying um, some type of uh, you know, amount towards it. I think I think a lot of times they, we just ignore the fact that they got money that they can use. Um, but every time we turn around, now we're dealing with refuse and we're buying, you know, different things. So I'm like, where is their coffers at and what kind of money do they have? And has the CFO shared any information with us? Maybe we need them to start telling us some of those things. So.
I, I don't, I don't disagree with uh anything that you said, Councilwoman Deitch. And um I think that this is a starting point in that it can't, like, we talked about, it can be reviewed on an annual basis and it's a work in progress on what we're doing. Because I don't disagree with you on uh we have to look at the financial outlook and what we have been uh doing and what we're gonna do in the future with this uh uh re- not refuge, but uh well, I guess we won't say refuge pickup from uh, properties. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna move so we can start talking about uh the refuge, the refuge issue so we can get some groundwork, get some facts and, and uh some figures. Hopefully we have some to talk about this refuge. Thank you. Yes, Michael, come up there. You know, talk to us.
Well, just a quick note, Mike Milatovic, I'm the General Manager at the Sanitary District. Just a quick note about the money that we do collect from user fees, which is for the wastewater treatment facility and the collection system. Our operating expenses are significant, large, and, and we also have equipment that's that actually passed the service life. For example, the equipment that we use for dewatering sludge was installed, I believe, in 84. And we've managed to maintain it, keep it operational and so forth. But at some point in the not-too-distant future, that's gonna have to be replaced. And that's probably gonna be somewhere close to a million dollars perhaps. We have digesters where we uh, process the, the raw sludge uh to a point where we can dispose of it, land apply it and so forth. Right now, we have uh painting that's gonna be taking place. That's going to cost, I believe, about 400,000, 450,000 dollars. So when we have to spend money, and those are just some of the, uh, large items right now, in addition to, for example, our tertiary system, sample tration is being refurbished, the electronic controls, because all of this equipment is old. Uh, especially by today's standards with the electrical controls and the digital age, all of our headworks is gonna have to be updated. Uh, so when we talk about doing these repairs and updates, we're talking 100 Uh, so when we talk about doing these repairs and updates, we're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars, so. What appears to be a significant amount of money that we have. I believe we're required to have a certain amount in reserve, uh, just to be responsible in how we operate the facilities. But that money goes very quickly, so, uh. Our. You know, Scott Kissler is our financial officer, does a good job of being the steward of the money and, and. Assists us to keep the expenditures, uh, eh, to a reasonable amount, what is necessary. So when, um. When we think about the amount of money that we collect. It's, uh, it, it goes very quickly when we encounter these situations that. We have to, uh, we have to correct. In order to comply with the, our operating permit, which is issued by the state. So, just to keep in mind, and if. I don't expect there will be any, any issue of, uh, uh, you know, sharing insights about our finances, but, uh. You know, the large sums of money, whatever sums of money we have. We need that as, as, as a, a fund that we can go to when we get these emergency situations. Where we have to upgrade systems in order to stay in compliance with our permit. So just something to keep in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, with that being said, then I, I would request, um. And I can guess I can get this from the controller's office, how much, cause I, I know we have, um, our IT is in there. Uh, it's under sanitary district, I know. Uh, I'd be interested in how much we spend in overtime and all those different things because. We sign off on your budget, but we don't get, really have a, a conversation about it, so. You know. It's what it is, and I think that. That's something that this year that we really need to be watching and understanding, especially with the refuse department being with the sanitary district, but both. Know how much is spent in overtime and all those different things because we're tearing up equipment. And doing different things and things are breaking down, we're not tearing up, but things are breaking down. But I'd be curious how that works with the sanitary district as well because. We don't know. Um, so, you know, it says in, in the code book that there's supposed to be this. One fund that you have that, you know, so I, I think there's a lot, a lot of questions maybe, and that's why. Um, you know. You know, when we had this project, you know, the sanitary district, they wanna kick in, we wanna do annexation, so I think all eyes are on y'all. For both departments now, and so with that being said, I, I would, I'm gonna send a list of questions that I have for, for you all. And for your finance guy to share with us. But I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yes, absolutely, and just in closing, if I could address, I just wanna say like, okay, go ahead. Angie, uh, on a monthly basis, I go through all our financials with our board. And it goes by each of the funds, we've established funds for the sanitary district, the actual. Sewer part, but refuse, we have limited funds, it is based on tax revenue. It's not user rate. And I go through that and I would welcome you to come to our next meeting, which is week from tomorrow. And you'll see, we go through every fund.
Up on that, but probably separately, just to sit down and make sure I understand instead of. The board time.
Yeah, just come on by and I'll show you what I show them. But we do go through it on a monthly basis though, so. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So. Let's, uh, get into this, uh, refuge, uh.
Let me make, can I have one more?
Yes, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I did, I have one more comment and that's, that was a good comment that the, uh. City Controller brought up that possibly the, uh. Sanitary district. Could look at spending more money on, on some of these projects. And that may be possible, but you know, the sanitary district was here back in January. Asking for a million dollars of ARP money for garbage trucks. Uh, there'd be four, it's again for two hundred fifty thousand dollars for this. Uh, refuse. Truck, uh, to me. It doesn't sound like they have a whole lot of money, I don't know exactly how much money they have. But. It's still a good point that. The mayor. The city controller, I guess that's legal or however it can be legal, is to sit down. With this department or call this department down to the mayor's office and say, hey, show us your books and tell us what you got. You have a hundred thousand dollars extra, do you have a million dollars extra? What is your reserve? In your department? And then go from there, we just, you know, don't. Start here in, uh, you know, halfway through this ordinance reading and say, hey, we need to do this. I mean, that, you know, this administration has been in office now three and a half years. And if they haven't sat down with the district. And said, hey, what is in your books? Can we see your books? Then I say that they dropped the ball long time ago. But that's what needs to be done. Departments talking to each other. They had. Financial person of the city sitting down, talking to the. Financial controller of the sanitary district. And show us what you got. So I think that needs to be done, it needs to be scheduled, and then maybe we can move forward. With whatever else we have coming before us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Don Presbylinski, um. All right, so now I would like to get into a discussion about this refuge. Uh, problem we have, um. Steve, do you have any figures on how much we're spending? Um, not a year, but on a. A quarterly basis on, on some of these. Refuge pickups that we're making on, uh. Say people flipping homes and, uh. Landlords throwing. All the rubbish out in the alleyways on these rental properties. Stuff like that. I mean, thi- this is what I've been seeing that. What's going on in, uh. A lot of people. Putting stuff out on the street and thinking that the sanitary district should pick it up when, and I'm not saying that. Somebody, a resident who's got a. Uh, needs something picked up, shouldn't get it picked up, but, you know. People who are running a, uh. A business, well, let's say for a profit. You know, they're, they're an endeavor to make, make money and, uh, if they're having constant pickups at their home. Or their place of business, I don't think that this. We should be subsidizing, that's actually we're subsidizing them. That may be a, uh, and I don't think that's a far stretch. Because there's a consistent stream of individuals putting out stuff on, on these, on these. Rental properties and. We've had, uh, people come to us. With, uh, they wanna inspect properties, but I think that we have a, a bigger problem. When it comes to this refuge, because then you get into tying up, not only going and picking up. The refuge, going and picking up and. Taking it to wherever you guys take it and get it weighed and paying the fee. But here's the other side of that coin. There's an ordinance that people who are doing these things are, I believe there's ordinance that. Supposed to have a, uh. Should have a dumpster. And, and they're not being, it's not being taken care of, and I, that's not, nothing. With you guys, I mean, I just wondered if you guys had a. A grip on how much this is costing us and I don't. I mean, maybe you might have to. You know, get into some detail, uh. Informational work with the inspection department on. Who we're making pickups at this home. Or this house, or this property, I'll put it, we're, we're making pickups at this property. Is this a rental? Is this a rental? Or is it a residence? You know, there's, to me, there's a big diff. So, no, I know, I don't wanna. What do you got, what do you got for us, Steve?
Uh, I was just gonna say, it's very difficult to cost account for, uh, partial truckloads or say three pieces of furniture. Uh, as, as the process goes on during the day. We usually have. Probably thirty or forty, what we call special pickups every, every week. Okay, and if it's, you know, a couch or a recliner, it, it's difficult to keep records that cost account for that particular item.
Okay, well. To me, if it's, it's a couch. Or a recliner. That, uh, most likely is a, a small pickup. And I know that you make a bunch of them and it makes a big pickup, but I don't, I think what you're saying is true is difficult, but. What I'm looking at is the big. Pickups and people that just throw trash out on the right away and. Don't, don't even, don't even give you a heads up that they need a pickup. See, there's a lot of abuse going on here and the residents are subsidizing that and. I think that there's, uh. For-profit entities. And we, we just gotta try to keep. Track of who, who they are, what's going on here on, in the cost factor and, and see, here's where I'm getting at, if we don't keep track of them. How can we cite them? How can we tell them? All right, and, oh, yes, Angie, go ahead.
I, I just wanna bring up a couple of things I asked, um, at a previous meeting and, um, also, so. You know, even with those pickups, we should know how many. It, there should be a database, I hope there's a database of all the pickups and addresses that we have, but I think if you roll the truck. And we, it's a communication thing with the residents and the public. Anything outside of the spring cleanup and anything outside of the fall cleanup. Uh, I think there should be a fee, a roll truck fee. And regardless of the size, now if you get there and it's something extreme, but I think for additional pickups outside of those. Those things that are actually set in stone, we know spring cleanup, we're gonna be busier at that time, we're gonna run overtime at that time. Outside of that re- resident, you better have your stuff together, cause you're gonna get a fifty dollar fee. You know, something basic, simple, and then you get into those big ones, you find them. But all this, you know, we're rolling, rolling trucks and. And I just wanna know, like you said, we're averaging that, but I would think we will have a database of every single address. That we go do pickups on because my question was, how many citations have we written? And the, and the answer was hardly any in the last year. That, that was the, the answer, didn't give me a number, but very, very few. And, you know. I, we had a trash inspector for a reason. And I'm like, okay, so if there are no citations, have any letters gone out? What, what has that person been doing? For the last year? If we have someone who's, that's their responsibility. If they're riding around and looking at this stuff, if, for all these complaints to happen and we have somebody who's a full-time employee. Getting paid to do that job. You know, but now you had to run weekend crews to get it all cleaned up, what's been going on for the last? However, time, so those are the questions that I had is, you know. That's a revenue stream that can help pay, offset some of these things, but we gotta change the, the. The way we operate and communicate with the residents because just like Councilman Paul said. They're taking advantage of the situation, cause we've allowed this to happen, just call whenever you feel like it. And then when you don't get someone to answer the phone or you don't get a return call, then. You, I'm, I'm guilty, we get mad, right? We get mad. So we gotta change the way we, we operate, but I, I, that was my question, how come no citations? Full-time employee and the garbage was backed up the way it was, it was just a disgrace. And nobody had any answers, I mean, cause I was like, well, how many pickups do we do a week? You know, how many citations are we giving out a week? I, I don't wanna willingly give out citations either, because then it looks like we're just doing it because of all the complaints. It still has to be structured and, and, and I, I thought there was an ordinance or something that did that already. And if we need to change that, let us know. If there's something we need to do on the council end to change the ordinance, to fix the fees or whatever it is. Versus just us kinda haphazardly, you know. You know, digging at folks and doing that, I, I guess I wanna know what your plan is for, you know. For the future. You know, what steps are y'all taking so that we don't get in this situation again? Because it, it was just a lot and we don't want every council meeting to be, um, bashing the refuse because like I said. They're out there rain sleeve or snow. But again, you told us too, the large workman's comp claims, I wanna know how much we've spent over the last three years for that too. Because I think all those things are important for the safety of our workers. So those are my comments and I'm just gonna leave it there and you guys tell us what the plan is and what you need from us. So that we can not go down that path again. Thank you.
Okay, Councilman Don Presbylinski.
Yeah, uh, as far as the special pickups go. Do we have a record keeping system for special pickups?
Yes.
Okay, it's computerized?
Yes.
Okay, uh. I'll tell you, I'll tell you what. Uh, can you email? The last quarter? Uh, of special pickups requests from that system?
We should be able to do that. We should, we should be able to do that.
Okay. And also the refuse inspector, does he work directly for you guys? Or does he work for the street department and who does he work for?
He does work for us and. An example, last week, a contractor. Put a bunch of broken cabinetry out on Franklin Street. Sort of expecting us to pick it up. And in a case like that, the refuse inspector. Talks to the customer and explains, listen. You gotta get this out of here, this is not on us. And it, it was, in, in two days, it was removed.
Okay. And as Councilwoman Dyke said, has this individual written any tickets yet?
Yes.
Okay. Can you send copies of the tickets that he has, uh, written?
Believe we can do that.
To see what he's done? Okay. I, uh, and basically with this new truck and the, I had a conversation with Steve and Mike, uh. Seems to me that we do need. This new truck, uh, it's gonna be operated, what, one? One driver and that's all you need for this vehicle?
That, it, that is one way that it can be done.
Yeah.
It might be helpful in some cases to have a laborer to assist the, the driver operator.
Do you have the manpower to have this truck? Be, because it sounds like we. So. We ran a lot of overtime to catch up. And so my question is, yes, you need one person, but we got these workmen cops. I, I just, I'm trying to understand the root of it, I, I think the root of some of that is the labor. You know, labor intensive picking up couches and things, I do agree with that. But I guess I'm trying to understand, cause. How are you gonna, this is gonna operate outside of the regular routes on certain days and. Can other departments use it? I mean. I'm, I'm trying to understand because it's not, it's gonna be down, it's not gonna be used as much if. We are still running our, our garbage pickup service the way we are and, and having, um. I don't know how much, um, overtime we have, but. I'm curious to that, how, what's the plan going forward with this truck?
We would use it for certain types of special pickups that it's well suited to, to pick up. I wouldn't rule out the idea of allowing the street department to pick up large piles of brush with it. I wouldn't rule out the idea of allowing the street department to pick up large piles of brush with it. Because at the moment, they have to have a, a wheel loader operator and a dump truck and, and a laborer, so it's like a crew of three. With this particular truck, once we get good at it, we can, we can do this, these kind of pickups with one person, which reduces our, our need for labor.
Are you gonna have to hire somebody to operate this truck, or do you have somebody on the staff right now that's gonna be ready to go and operate this vehicle?
We have several operators that would be qualified to run it out of the box. Although they would, you know, want to have a little practice to get good at it.
Yeah, but you won't have to go out and hire somebody to operate this truck?
Not specifically, no.
Okay.
I have two, two comments. One is, and, um, piggyback backing off of Councilwoman Dyke in regards to the additional use of this vehicle, of this truck, will the, um, other departments be able to utilize it? And again, we are still talking about additional needs of equipment. So it will eventually probably come before the council that there, that the street department is requesting a tandem to assist in these pickups. Because currently what they're using right now, um, they're using the manpower and they have the client on top of the trucks, which is posing a health, health and safety issue. So they're seeking for a new vehicle as well. So do you foresee that also being tied in that will also be able to assist you? If that was to pass for the, um, truck that you're requesting?
We work very closely with the street department and.
That that was conveyed, and that's one of the reasons why they were, uh, seeking, um, for a tandem as well. And I don't know if any of you, uh, received though, that information, um, from Mr. Smith regarding the request for that. And so my thing is it's, it's taking me back. There is a need, but again, I'm just gonna put this out there. We've been asking, I've said it repeatedly. We got budget hearings that's getting ready to come up with the next month and a half. We need to know these things now. We should have known about this. If these, if this equipment, your, um, was deteriorating and wasn't pliable to carry out its duties so that we knew that this is something that we should have been anticipating and we probably could have looked at this before now. So if this is something else that you may foresee, not just from the, our request that you're looking for now for the vehicle, is there any other requests for equipment that you're gonna need? Cause th- these requests is just coming out the woodworks now.
We have an extensive grant application in with NERPC. To essentially replace our garbage truck fleet at about a twenty percent match, if I recall correctly.
That is correct, yeah. Yes. So, and there's no other additional appropriations that would be available. So these funds, um, for that particular vehicle that's, um, that's coming before the council will be coming out of the Riverboat. I'm biting my gums on this, cause I just wish that there was another way that this could be funded instead of coming out of the Riverboat.
I mean, well, they came to ARPA, but again, ARPA is a once in a lifetime funding source that should be used on things that we should look back in ten years from now. Most of the stuff that we purchased for ARPA is gonna be gone. We're gonna be like, poof, it's gone. Of equipment and a bunch of stuff that's, uh, depreciated out, there's garbage. And we're not gonna be able to show anything that we did significant. And we have a, a, you know, look at, you know, our website, our different, you know, how we do permitting, all this stuff that we could have done with that money. At least we're gonna do something with the small businesses and housing at some point. But yeah, I, I was against ARPA. Riverboat, this is something that's citywide and it's a citywide issue. And, uh, you know, I just don't like, I, I agree with you, Councilwoman Tillman, that I agree with you that it seems like every time you turn around, there's requests now. Go talk to the council, go ask them for ARPA, go ask them for this, go ask them for that. With no rhyme or reason that like, no one knew that these were issues ever. It just keeps dropping on us. I, I guess I don't like that, but outside of that, I mean, that's the only reason why I would, I, I sup- I would support something coming out of River, Riverboat is because it's a citywide issue that is something that to provide essential services and to keep garbage off the street. That was the only reason why, um, we suggested it, because we already exhausted our rainy day fund on another on the fire trucks that we needed. So seems like everything is just coming to a head on equipment.
Are you, are you good, Angie?
I'm good.
Um, so there's a lot of things, there's a lot of things going on here, but you, you know, here's, here's what I would like to say to the council and, and to this, you know, sanitary district and whoever might watches. There's another player, another department that's not here right now. And that's the planning and inspection department, because th- they should be working hand in hand with the refuge, because they know, uh, who, who's who out there on, on these, uh, people who are dumping their, uh, trash, not their, their re- refuge out of their businesses onto the right of ways, out into the alleyways. But he- here's what I will say, if we don't, if we don't start working together as, as a team and we start imposing any kind of fees, what we're gonna have is we're gonna have like it turned into the, the late seventies and the eighties of, we're gonna have a real, we're gonna have junk laying all over. And I, what I mean is people going out and throwing their stuff out on the side roads in the, in a say the east side of town in agricultural areas. So I mean, we have to look at this on how it's gonna impact and what, how we're gonna move forward. And, and I think that we need to sit down, have another meeting with the sanitary district before, um, we get to the budget hearings and to find out what, and you guys need to come up with a plan on what we're doing. And I know one thing that really bugging me is that not moving forward on these, uh, sewer separation projects that have been studied and restudied, that would help reduce the influ- inflow of stormwater into your, uh, plant. And you know, that's just a s- that's a small segment, but that is part of the big picture. And then getting with the inspection department, because Steve, your, your statement earlier about that, uh, I think it was in the three thousand block of Franklin Street. Well, there was no citation issued for that, uh, of that residence. I know that for a fact. Cause you know what I was told? That's one of our good landlords. So if that's one of our good landlords that should know the rules, okay, and if they don't, then maybe the inspection department needs to write up a brochure and show them the ordinance and start delivering it to these, uh, landlords that are the problem here. Sorry, Mike.
No, uh, I, I, I just wanted to, uh, respectfully address the council as far as on our needs with the equipment for refuse. Our needs have not changed since the last time we addressed the needs with a, an accounting of the number of units that we have, their age and so forth. Um, and we appreciate the allocation from the council of the ARPA funds and, and, uh, the money for the, uh, two trucks that we're purchasing. We were supposed to have delivery of those trucks, uh, I think it was originally set in January. We still don't have. Uh, the supply chain, uh, different components of the trucks are not available. The date keeps getting set back. We are expecting him to arrive now in early part of July. So our situation has not changed through, in this case, no fault of our own, because we have no control on when we get these trucks. Equipment is just not available. Uh, so when, when they do arrive, it should take quite a bit of strain off of the, our, our, our inventory of, of, uh, equipment. And the o- one thing, while I'm at it, just to comment about some of the overtime issues, uh, much of that has to do with having adequate staff and being able to find, for example, CDL drivers. Because the wages that we pay are simply not a magnet for people to come to Michigan City and drive, uh, a truck that requires a CDL. So in any case, well, these are just some, uh, parts of the reality I have to contend with, uh, to, uh, get the job done and, and cover the, all the needs that we have as far as with the equipment and, and, and staffing. So the one thing is, the two new trucks that we're, we're purchasing are side loaders, one arm operating, which will also help us in reducing the, uh, the staff, the, not reducing the staff, but being able to, uh, being able to allocate staff in a more efficient way. So anyway, no one's gonna be put out of job. It's just that we're gonna be able to actually do some things and hopefully reduce some of the overtime.
I just have a suggestion.
Yes.
It appears that since we have new residents that's coming into the city that may not be familiar, that we have those that are longtime residents that may not be knowledgeable or is aware that if I'm putting out something like a couch or chairs of some sort, that I need to call in to have that picked up or for a special pickup. I would suggest if they, if you all could do a one-time notification to go out and that explains what that process is and when someone should call in. And then from there, once you do that mass mailing, set a date effective, let's say September first. Then if you implement or to increase the additional fees, if there's anything over the special pickup, the two special pickups, then then they're now aware, at least on the city's end. We know that we intentionally tried to make sure that we notify our constituents what the process is in order to have, um, their refuse picked up and what the penalties will be if they don't follow that process.
Yes, I, I couldn't agree more. Thank you very much, uh, for that. And actually, we have a press release that is being reviewed that will articulate those points and, and perhaps even have more of a outreach, uh, to the public. So they have a clear understanding exactly what is what is expected, uh, of each residence, uh, w- w- you know, what their, uh, uh, money, uh, is paid, what, what is, uh, covered, so to speak. And what they're allowed to put out without expecting a charge. And then if there are other items, like a sofa or a couch or whatever, that, uh, explaining exactly what that would entail.
Mike?
Yes.
Could you, uh, and that's a good suggestion, Councilwoman Tillman. Couldn't we put a mailer out in the, uh, water bill with
Right.
citing the, the, uh, application of the codes and what, what they're aware of and then boom, it, it's out there and they know if they got a lot of stuff that they, they have a responsibility that we, we have to come up and say, okay, we got spring cleanup, we got fall cleanup, okay. I was always under the impression from Mr. K that you're allowed one special pickup, uh, a year, all right? And I know it's not written in stone. So I guess we gotta come up to a, meet some kind of, uh, uh, medium that says, okay, you're paying for the service and we're picking up your refuge and uh, you know, how to measure how much we're gonna charge somebody if they have, uh, a special need. Or if we're gonna allow one pickup or or if we're gonna allow to have them get picked up a couch or a si- a chair. So, you know, it's, it's, I think we have to come up to that medium. Okay, uh, and I think that, that's, that's easy enough to do and, uh, then we'll move forward.
I can speak with the water department. We have good communication. Perhaps we can, they can accommodate a buyer to be attached to the bill.
The inspection department on, uh, what the rules are in the code, you know, that, that they're supposed to enforce and just put it out there. Okay.
I think we can make that happen, hopefully.
Are you, are you good with that, Ms., Ms. Tillman? Okay. All right.
Thank you for the feedback. Thank you.
Okay, so I think that we made a lot of good points tonight. And I think that by moving forward, we'll, uh, come up with some information and try to get the inspection department involved with this, this process also. I wanna thank everybody who attended and for the input tonight. Thank you. And I think that we've accomplished our goal. Thank you. Meeting over.